Thank you all for coming. Today is a special meeting of April 26, March 10, 07. Ms. Martinez, would you please call over?
Commissioner Farrow.
Present.
Chairman Gago.
Here.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Here.
Commissioner Don. Present.
Thank you. And then, Mr. President. Let me ask you one question.
Let's adjourn to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Commissioner, I have an agenda before you. I don't think any changes or additions. What's up? Motion. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second, I'm Mr. Secretary of Defense. Mr. Kennedy, please call over.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Don, Vice Chair Don. Yes. Chairman Gago.
Yes. Alright, next item is item five. This is budget matters. We have the A and B. We start with the review of the third quarter financial report. It's 2018. Final budget is Martinez. Lieutenant Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm gonna try to go as fast as I can, but I want to stumble on my words, so just be patient if I start getting all nervous. I let you guys go treat.
First, we're about it.
Press to talk? No, just to hear that. Oh, okay. Now I can totally hear myself. I let you guys sit down just in case you need some control of your ears. This is gonna kind of deal a lot more important. The third quarter report for the past nine months ends on our third quarter 2019. The financial position at this time remains stable. We're able to sustain adequate cash balances in all our funds. We continue to monitor this activity, and we are aligned with our financial plan for the 2020 budget cycle. The 2018, oh, excuse me, 2018 and 2019 final capital purchases. The first four we talked about during the second quarter. The last two are capital purchases that are being worked on right now. The Rio Grande Fire District and the Borahia in Norwina, which is at the one item's office building. In our general fund, the illustration before you captures five fiscal years of revenue expenditures, transfers, and the non-set cash balances for every period ending March 31st. In 2019, we started out with 6.3. Revenue to date is 10.6. Expenditures are 8.2, and transfers in and out net to 1.9 million, leaving us with an ending cash balance of 6.7, a little lower than last year's balance. The next page is the revenue broken down by each revenue source that's collected by the county. This is the breakdown below on the bottom. This is where you'll see last year we had brought in 10.3. Now we're at 10.6. We have the transfers in and out, and then we have some expenditures from last year at 7.8 to this year's 8.2 million. The numbers on your range are in the middle column, the as of March 31st 2018 and as of March 31st 2019. Towards the end of my presentation, I'm gonna actually take the time to go over each of the general fund departments to go over the actuals from current year to prior year here. One of our other major funds I'm gonna go over is the public aid officer department today. This is an historical view for five years back from every period ending March 31st. You will see that the revenue has slightly downed from last year, and the expenditures are also slightly down from last year. We've only had to transfer and expect $150,000, leaving us with an ending cash balance as of March 31st 2018 in the amount of $186,000. House County did recently have our auction. We were able to make over plus $100,000 in that fund. They were broken down individually, but of course, the revenue in current auctions period ended, so we won't see the revenue for the, um... What is that actually called? The sale of fixed assets and long-term exposure. Last year, at this time, House County had brought in $592,000. This year is about $580,000. The difference last year to this year is basically contribution, the forest use distribution. We heard that the monies are coming in yet, but they haven't been received by the county just yet. But last year, we only received $28,000, and we're expected to receive the $200,000 this year. The expenditure budget is next. On the public works, you'll see some slight increases and slight increases in the salary and benefits column. Towards the bottom, we have the operating expenses. Last year, we had the $550,000 in expenses. This year, in the operating budget, we have $365,000. The total department expenses last year were 1.1, and this year they're $985,000, leaving us with an ending cash balance. The ending cash balance is also changed to the reserve requirement that we have to keep in this fund. Our next fund that I'll work with here is the E911 fund. It comes with five years from every period ending March 31st. This year, we started off with a little high cash balance of the $725,000. The revenue to date as of March 31st was a little over a million dollars, and the expenditures have increased in this fund by $86,000 compared to last year's $631,000. We also have to set aside the capital reserve fund for this fund, so that's $300,000, leaving us with an ending cash balance as of March 31st of the $682,000. This fund requires us to follow certain criteria as of the JK agreement. So last week, or early this week, we actually met with the finance subcommittee regarding the fund for the 2020 budget cycle. We were able to go over with this, and now we're just waiting for the board to approve before they actually approve our 2020 budget. The expenditure budget is on this slide illustrated here. This fund also requires us to have a capital reserve fund and the low-fee imposed loan swap that we require here, leaving us with an ending cash true balance of the $682, of course, backing up the $300,000 from the capital reserve fund. Our senior citizens fund is next. We've experienced a lot of adjustments throughout here in this fund. Thank you for being patient on that. We've been with the director back and forth with some of the agreements that were shorted at the beginning of the fiscal year, but it ended up being that triple date ended up giving us all the management that they owe us pretty much to maintain and monitor this fund. We started off with the cash balances in this fund of $183. The revenue is a little bit down this year, only because we didn't get the distribution from March until April. The amount is 461 versus last year's amount was 522,000. The expenditures have increased, and the transfer in from the general fund remains the same at this period of the 42,365. Before the fiscal year does come to a close, I will transfer the remaining balance of 42,365. Keep in mind, it's been about four fiscal years that House County contributes to this fund, $84,000. This year, we may have to increase a little bit more. The ending cash balance, because we didn't get the revenue timing, was $63,983 in this fund at March 31st ending. One of the adjustments that happened at the last commission meeting was we received the DPS contract, so there was a amendment at number one. What they did is they increased free units for the federal distributions to county, which means obviously the units weren't satisfied to the projected estimate at about 75% for the fiscal year now. So as of March 31st, it seems like those numbers are a little bit lower, but that's only because they increased our units to give us more funding than the federal government. This is the breakdown of the revenues. Keep in mind, we administered three funds for this program. The bottom side captures the total revenue and all the funds that are administered. The transfers in and the total balance on the bottom ties to your recap page in the front. In this fund, we administered the coffee gate, which are the meals that are served in the centers. We also administered the home-to-deliver meals, the foods that are delivered to the hometown seniors. And we also provide transportation services to the senior program. We don't have the income contracts with the homemaker or the respite for the 20th cycle that we're in right now. And we plan that we won't get those for the next budget cycle either. And our 226 funds, our detention fund. Our detention fund started off with a higher cash balance. The revenue seems a little bit lower, but keep in mind, the first two months of the fiscal year, we didn't have to pay any of our loan resets. So we received a little bit more GRT, but we are down in our revenue. The expenditures are about 2.9, and so for this fund, we transferred $1.1 million from the general fund into this fund, leaving us with an ending cash balance of $138,000 for the period ending March 31st. The next page is the breakdown of the revenue side of it, and you'll see the notation on the top portion of the comparisons. Last year, March 31st, we had $197,000 that we collected in GRTs. Now, March 31st, it's $223,000. It's not much, but keep in mind, because we have this revenue pledge for debt, we did receive too much, so that went a little bit higher. Looking at the far right, you'll see that before I close the fiscal year, I'll probably have to adjust the GRTs according to what actions came into the county. So you'll see the next one is the correctional fund. Last year it was $47,000, and now it's $58,000. So I already met the projected budget of the $3200. So I'll have to make adjustments to that. We also did receive a little of the SCAP grant. It's a small portion that's the federal amount we're used to for, um... They basically have DTVs in our facility for federal offenses. So that amount came in very small at $888. The breakdown next is the bulk detention center side. Of course, we've assumed the operations of JDC. So you'll see the variance, of course, increased from last year to current year because it absorbed the entire cost, including repair contracts and medical contracts. Our solid waste funds, our first enterprise fund. Our solid waste fund has had some transitions in the past couple years regarding the property building that we talked about. They've proven to be successful. A lot of our constituents, like, they have to pay their property amount, get a pension card, and they go to the transportation or the lounge, and they'll their cash community without having to wait six months or having to wait one year to get that far. So they started off with the highest cash balance that they've had in many years of $281,000. The revenue to date is a little over a million dollars. The expenditures are slightly lower, and they have an ending cash balance of $461,532. Our treasurer's office, and I have discussed this fund and we're speaking about asking to pay off our debt that we had in this fund. Right now, we intercept about $52,001 for this, from this fund, and we might have to pay off the debt spenders before the fiscal year comes to a close. We're gonna see about getting this paid off sooner than later.
Mr. Treasurer. Yes. Thank you. What's the total amount of the debt term?
Right now, we're actually waiting for the estimates to come in, and I'm afraid we're going to actually pay off them all. But it's 1/4 of 1/4. She has a part of this part. Well, look, the cash balance, they have enough cash on hand to pay off, so that's why we're placing that.
All right. Two hundred.
Yes. I also want to intercept the month.
So the old, I'm trying to figure out, but there are going to be one month of the year that we're having to go.
So they have the cash on hand to pay, and if they do this, actually, we'll allow them later on to figure out if they can get some capital expenditures that we can probably get from NFA or some of the big trucks that they're making also. So because of their cash balance, we're able to work on their debt loss spenders, which will then be nice because then their GRTs will be intercepted and we'll deal with more revenue in the next year's budget. So you'll see the breakdown of the GRTs. The top portion, so we started out with $281,000. The ending cash last year was $196,000. The environmental tax that came in last year was $176,000. This year it's a little bit slightly lower. However, when you total up the GRTs, we are about the 75% collection rate that we should get this time. The landfill reserve fees is huge. Last year was $675,000. We're about $673,000. So we're about $1,200 under from last year, which is good because we've been able to maintain the collection rate that we set for the solid waste division. We also have the bid rentals that would generate revenue from coming in at $40,000. Last year was $39,000, so no real change there. And the scrap metal is a little bit lower than last year. The franchise fees are pretty much in line with what they should be at this time. Last year would have been, uh, last year's amount is the first part of the quarter. We can receive an extra payment that was due for the previous fiscal year. So that's the reason why the revenue change is kind of different, but it's basically no real change. Our solid waste operations. This fund is the operations of the solid waste department. On the bottom, you'll see that last year was $847,000. This year is $715,000. One of the biggest changes that happened in this fund and also with all the public works fund was that we are now paying for the maintenance of vehicles from our fleet division. So you'll see a lot of the expenses that usually would cost for this fund to repair the vehicles is now being paid from our fleet division. So towards the middle column, you'll see the maintenance vehicle furniture. Last year, we had $23,851 in expenses. This year, we have $1,400. And only because, like I said, the fleet division is paid for that.
Seven, five.
Okay, it's trans the middle. Yeah, it's called maintenance of vehicles furniture. So there's the $23,000 versus the $1,400 that actually hit. So right at the tail end of the fiscal year that we're gonna close, we've been doing a cost accounting measures with this department and with the public works department. So we're gonna tally it to see how much expenses actually came from these funds that should have been charged to their fund. We'll then bill both funds, and then we'll take the money back into our coffers, and then replenish what we actually offset. This is basically one of our benchmarks that we're trying to do is doing cost accounting measures and we're gonna see how successful this was with the prior one. If it doesn't seem that it's working or a project, we're just open to approve as a process. We'll probably go back and put the money back into the respective funds. But for now, it's easier, it's easier for our fleet division to obtain the parts in bulk rather than having to order them each in individual funds and then try to figure out after the fact. So right now, it's generally good to tell them that. Our next division of that is the solid waste administrative side of it. There's no real change from last year to this year. Last year's total department expenses were basically the same as they are right now at $115,000, leaving us with the high cash balance of $161,532.21 as of March 31st. Our 509, um... Started off with a little bit lower cash balance than what was projected. The revenue came in a little bit lower. Keep in mind that the revenue now, that amount there includes that $140,000 that Holy Cross Hospital pays us every odd year. The expenditures are about comparable to last year's, so about 1.2. To the last year's 1.2. The transfers, we've had to transfer into this fund are $290,000. The $290,000 transfers has come from the general fund and a small allocation from the 399, leaving us with an ending cash balance in this fund of $218,000. Keep in mind, that $218,000 includes that $140,000 from our Holy Cross Hospital. So probably we're averaging about $50,000 every time we cross this payroll. So I think by the time I cross this next payroll, I'm gonna have to another transfer. And I'll probably have to come before the commissioners in the month of May to ask for another permanent transfer to this fund, reaching $100,000 to carry us through fiscal year. And this was something I could say during our second quarter review. The revenue, like I said, has decreased slightly. We had our EMS director come by in your presentation regarding the decreases that he has been experiencing. But at the same time, we have to provide these services to constituents in the county. The next slide is our, is our breakdown of our EMS revenue. And that's where you'll see the biggest tip we've been experiencing. Last year, this time, House County had brought in $934,000 in intake fees. This year, we're in $727,000. And that's where you'll see that this year, we collected the $140,000 from this Holy Cross versus last year, of course, when we didn't pay. And the transfers is what's given us the cash balance to basically operate this fund and pay payroll and their ACH runs. They also have a small substation. They also administer that's the Panayaswag Dills. In this fund, you basically have the temporary positions. And of course, their wage is like going with that as far as the benefits. We have a small operating budget in this one. So last year, we had expended $69,000. Now we're at $57,000 with the Panayaswag base, leaving us with the ending cash balance of $218,000, which does include $140,000. I'll leave that. Thank you. Some of the other funds I'll go over. The 103, which is our county infrastructure fund, our Rogers Tax, our Rogers Tax Non-Common, our Recreation Fund, our Healthcare Systems Fund, our County Hospital Fund, the Non-Zero Levy, and our Capital Fund. Our first one is our 103. So 103 started off with a little bit lower cash balance, but it was actually pretty good because we didn't have two payments that weren't reset from this fund the first two months of the fiscal year. So the revenue for the GRTs a little bit higher compared to last year. Last year, we had brought in $462,000. This year, we're at $658,000. Again, included in the food and drink bill, and the equalization tax came in a little bit higher. We haven't transferred any money out from the 103 just this year yet, but we do have some budget transfers from this fund to the 204. The operating expenses in this fund are smaller than last year's. So last year, we had the $222,000, and we're at about $147,000 right now. Last year's ending cash balance in the 103 fund, and this is the one that set aside for capital projects, is also 1.4, and this year it's $1,388,000. Our Rogers Tax Promotional Fund has a high cash balance that we started off in the fiscal year. Our Rogers Tax collections have been proven to increase significantly.
Lieutenant Martinez, can you go back to this one? Just like that.
So we're, we're $600,000 now, but we're budgeting to end up with 1.9 in that fund?
No. Right now, we have 1.9 ending cash balance as of March 31st. We don't really have anything in comber for this fund as far as the rest of the fiscal year. So in this one, we're gonna try to start off with a higher cash balance. So we'll try to start off this one with about $2.2 million.
And this is $593,000 ending cash balance in current budget. What's that ever?
That's unbudgeted cash.
Unbudgeted cash.
That's what we did in budget.
Okay. And does that mean that we intend to spend the additional 1.4 on it? The difference between the 593 and the 1.9?
Chairman, Commissioner Levin. Yes. This is where I want to spend for the distressed building is to use this for the water year fund. So we want to use this money to fix, fix the structural problems of the building.
And so we're anticipating that cash balance at next year, this time, to be down to around $600,000?
Depending on the cost estimates coming to from the engineer reports.
Right. When are we have those cost estimates? Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, but that's where this one, where we'll get paid from.
Okay.
Our Rogers Tax Promotional Fund has gained some increases from prior year. Last year, this time, we had brought in $122,000. Now we're at $154,000. We've had some expenditures, but not as many as I've received yet. So last year, we had $78,000 that we paid. This year, it's $66,000. So leaves us with an ending cash balance in our promotional fund of $221,829.4. And our Rogers Tax Non-Promotional Fund, the same thing we've experienced here. We've seen the increase in our collection of Rogers Tax. And we've also collected the same, pretty much comparable rate that we do for the public facilities. We also pay our debt service from this fund, so that's how we have transfers out of the $95,000. We also transferred from this fund to the Recreation Fund. We haven't had any salary and benefits paid for this fund, but we did hire someone recently as a caterer. So we'll be having this activity before the fourth quarter does come to a close. Last year, the department's expenses were $43,000. Now they're $50,000. That's basically a contribution to the utilities that we paid on those in the conference on the bottom. In the Rogers Tax Promotional Fund, the ending cash balance is $230,000. And you'll notice the previous cash balance was $221,000. So when House County reported our third quarter report to VFA regarding our Rogers Tax data, the cash balance was kind of high. So just telling you guys to be aware of that. Our next fund is our Recreation Fund. Our Recreation Fund has received one payment so far this fiscal year. Now that we start opening up this off, we'll probably start collecting some money from there. Last year, we had collected $100,000. This year, we've brought in $100,000. We've transferred into this fund from the Rogers Tax $20,000. In this one, we had one full-time position, but we haven't filled the vacancy that we have in this fund. And we have a small operating budget comparable to last year. We're basically paying utilities and the waste management services that pick up the waste management from the parks. Leaving us with an ending cash balance in this fund March 31st ending $5,600. Our Healthcare Systems Fund, formerly known as our Indigenous Fund, is next. We basically, we're looking at the GRT across the board pretty much at the 75% tile mark. We also have some investment income that we've received in this fund. Last year, we had brought in $6,300 of investment income. This year, we're at $19,000 in investment income. So we have greater revenue this year than last year. And we also have our expenditure broken down next by demonstrating last year's...
Same kind, same kind of question on that as, as on that 103 fund. There's, you know, a big, huge difference between the current budget and the yearly budget balance that, I don't understand. You know, goes from $4 million to $250,000. Why is that?
You're talking about the $4 million, and then actually the $17 to the $352,000?
Yeah.
The $352,000 is just the difference from the current year to prior year. So that is just the math on the difference.
The difference, difference. So it's extra money that's not budgeted?
No, it's not extra money. Don't think it's just a difference of revenue.
Poor choice of place. I'm still trying to figure out that difference. So does that mean that you anticipate spending three and a half million or so? Why, why is that such a big difference?
So let's go over the expenditure, which is on this next slide. So you'll see last year, this fund, we had operational expenses of $986,000 versus this year, we have $1.1 million in expenses. We are working with different providers in the community providing healthcare outreach services. So you'll see that there are some huge increases. One of the biggest things that we also fund from this fund is the Indigenous Cream. So last year, you'll see we had $128,000. Now we're at $270,000 that we paid out. We also have the outreach program that we've also provided. So that's toward the middle of the column. You'll see that we had expenditures last year of $32,000. They're a little bit higher, not $82,000. So as our outreach services continue to provide services.
Yeah.
But you're asking what is from March 31st to June 30th?
Does it?
There's a big...
Yeah.
Where's the $1.1 million in that time period?
Does the $353,000 represent what you anticipate will be a cash balance in the future after expenditures?
No.
What does that number represent?
It's kind of a bunch of it. So if you look at the math breakdown, it's in my page right now. I have to do that. So the yearly budget detail, that's just the difference. So the top part doesn't have the cash. So I'm looking at the second to the last column. So the current budget and the as of March 31st was our right current cash balances for current year just to comparison in the current March 31st. So what the current budget is, is what we budgeted for revenue, and the as of March 31st is what we brought in. The yearly budget balance is just the difference of what we need to bring in. So it's not necessarily tiny, tiny kind of balance available. This is what we just collect basically before the fiscal year comes to a close.
So they're close, pretty accurate.
Yeah. Almost. And so we're right about 75%. So that difference is...
Correct. And that's what he spoke of.
Yeah.
I got it. And it eliminates that cash.
Yes. Yes.
Then it's pretty close, but if that cash balance continues, well, it continues to hover around 4 billion, right?
Right, and so we're actually, like you said, we're trying to work with our communities and trying to get those outreach services to the constituents that need that kind of care. We are also covering a big portion of the detention contract from this fund. And as we do assessments, we qualify them for the indigent fund, so we have to be able to do those assessments in order to use this fund.
Okay, and then so the potential 500,000 dollar contract with, I can't remember the name of the outfit, they're trying to get their.
The, you're talking about a rehab treatment center.
Yeah.
What I wonder about 500,000 dollar number came from? That was reported in the paper, because there hasn't been a contract negotiated with them yet.
But if there is, will that, and if, you know, I know it might turn out to be 300,000 or something like that, whatever it turns out to be, if it is successfully negotiated, will it come from this one?
Yes. Also, it says one of those other programs, CAV, another one, which I've been running with, comes out of here and.
Of course, yeah, all those late programs come out of here, a couple, a few hundred grand here, it's really a wonderful use of the funds. And then Elvad over there, if we end up with a juvenile treatment center, is that also for this one? Yes.
I don't think we should worry about anticipating taking budgeting money out of here for that program.
Do you?
I can say with Ms. Martinez on it too, so.
Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, could you explain what the delay? Mr. Chairman, could you explain the delay? You said something about Medicaid reimbursements, is that taking place now in jail?
I didn't even mention Medicaid, but I figured you're talking about reimbursements from the detention. So the way it works is right now, if we have a detainee that's eligible for Medicaid, this program, the healthcare assistance fund, pays a portion of that contract. So as we determine eligibility of those detainees, we can use a portion of this fund to pay for the contract that we currently have with Core Health.
And are those assessments being done now?
So they're getting done, and so they bill us monthly, and so when the bill comes, we analyze the bill. We see who qualifies for the services that were rendered that month. And then from there, we capture those employees and those detainees that were eligible. And so we pay a portion from the 226, which is our detention fund, and we pay a pension, a portion from the 220, which is the indigent fund. So we are doing the breakdown on that, but we have to determine the costs every single month and then verify the breakdown to see who was eligible during that month. And who we see services more importantly. Our next one is our county hospital no-levy fund. Started off with a 2.28. I have written down the detailed disbursements that we've given out so far to all across hospitals for some capital expenditures. Totally the 1.4 million. We do have a cash balance in this fund of 1.8 million dollars. Our next one is our capital fund.
Chairman, your members of the commission is aware, holding boss, medical center, does want a proper story, so that will be on the next agenda for your consideration, remember to pay a lot of you.
Our next one is our capital fund. This is the fund where we put the money from the pills, we haven't received the money from the pills, we only see that until June every year, we do get it. So right now, there's no revenue that's come into this one. We've transferred some grants that have closed out, 529,000 dollars. And we've only transferred 50,000 dollars for non-going grant that we have. So as far as the reimbursement process goes for the grants, we are administering, and as we close out the grants, we're transferring the money back. And keep in mind that this also had a 150,000 and 140,000 permanent transfer in cash to that. So that 529 was not just attributed to grants closing out, it was attributed to permanent transfers into this fund from the general fund. Last year, we had expenses of 1.7, we also had expenses this year of 1.7. The biggest expense that we've had in this fund has been our portion of the senior centers, so we've put about 500,000 dollars from this fund to the fund base, so we're at 590,000 dollars right now. Now, this is going to take a little bit of time. This is the breakdown of our general fund departments, I'm just going to kind of go over them quickly unless you have a question on them. And my reference for each of them is just the bottom totals. So right now, this is the recap on everything that you'll see last year, about this time, it was 7.8. Now we're at 8.2, so right now, we're in the far right column, we're at 49% of the budget. And the commissioners' fund, middle columns on the bottom. Last year, we had expenses of 642,000, now we're at 547,000 dollars. Our probate judge has one of those, actually has the smallest budget in our general fund. It basically just funds your salary, because we've done a lot of things like centralized purchasing. She's able to get her training expenses and office supplies from our purchasing department and from our community sources. So last year, she had expenditures in 985 districts at 950 dollars. Leaves us with the expenditures in that fund from 23,000 to 25,000. This basically attributes to the increase that the local officials received in January. So that was that difference attributed to that increase. And our county treacherous fund, we have the total of pocket benefits last year, 250,000, 257,000 this year. Last year, we had expenses of 38,800. Now we have 410,000, about 68% of the budget. And our county sensors' budget, we have last year's expenses of 449 to 426,000, now this year, March 31st. Last year's total of expenses in the sensors fund were 664,000 versus now 629,000, which equates to 63% of the budget. And our GIS department, last year's expenses were 238. This year's expenses are about 217,000 dollars, or 69% of the budget. And our county sheriff's budget, last year's expenditures were 1.6 million dollars. This year, we're at 1.7 million dollars. He's pretty much right in line where he should be, at the 75% mark, he's at 73.12%.
Leave that out of the discussion.
Sure. Our next fund is our county clerk, last year, we had expenses of 326, versus now we have 302. A lot of times when we see a very inside that, it's because we had a vacancy that probably didn't get filled, so when we see a decrease in the salary portion, it's because of the vacancy that existed. And our voter elections, we had last year 75,000, and we have this year, we had 117,000. Keep in mind that the reason why we had a little bit more expenses this year is because we also had the elections, that's the reason why the variance was high. Even though we're not at 75% in budget, this one is at 64.21% of the budget. And our county manager fund is a March 31st, last year, they had the 337,000, now they're at 349,000 dollars. 63% of the budget. And our community resources department, last year, the expenditures totaled 246, they've increased slightly. And when I go over the 2020 budget, you'll see that there are some increase in some of the contractual services that we've asked for. Because the hiring process entails us to do a lot of new hiring orientation processes. We may have to increase some of the contracts that we do have. Last year, they had expenditures of 246,000, now they're at 248, 257,000, or 68% of the budget. Our risk manager is the new fund that we created last fiscal year. So last year, we had 50,000 dollars, March 31st, now we have 55,000 dollars. We basically had two auto claims this year versus last year, we only had one, so that's what should be the difference. But right now, he's at 60.71% of the budget. Our county attorney is next, last year, they had expenditures at total 276,000. Now we have expenditures at total of 246,000 dollars. Keep in mind that the biggest expense that we've had on this one has been the professional services. So if you look at the middle column, last year, it was 19,000, now we're at 137 because we're contracting for legal services. But right now, our county attorney stands at 58% of the budget as a March 31st. Our House County Facilities Department, 305,000 last year, to 314,000 this year, or about 60% of the budget. Through our next commission meetings, you'll see a couple of budget adjustments coming forth. He does have some balances that he wants to move around to try to get some stuff for just before fiscal year end. And our county finance department, last year, we had expenses of 878,000 dollars, to this year's expenses of 904,000 dollars. That's basically attributed to the actual expenses that we paid for this fund. As we acquire more properties and we pay more on utilities, those increases hit this fund.
I guess that kind of interview house is curious, over the last few years, are we spending more now than we used to when we had two attorneys under our?
Go back to that, okay, is the actual? Okay, so we go back to that. So one of the first two columns are 2017 actuals and 2018 actuals. So you look at full-time positions in 2017, it was 220,000, that's when we had the board. And then in 2018, we kind of transitioned to the two, and then now we're transitioning just to the paralegal. But we do have the budget positions aside for a contract attorney in-house if we're not hiring someone.
Right, I mean, our expenses are not going up since we made the change from two main house attorneys to contract attorneys.
It's probably, Chairman, Commissioner, it's probably somewhat comparable to the 2017 actuals. What'd you say, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, you consider that actuals on the bottom, 2017, 220, to the current budget of 420,000 dollars.
Yes, but doesn't this also include, we had some special circumstances, top of the hurdle?
Those get together in 399.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do we, this one overall, we had two main house attorneys. That dollar amount, you see, there is benefits and everything.
That's what benefits and.
So it's still. So most of it, yeah, most total, 400. So the total salary and benefits were 290,000 and.
The current budget is, yeah.
And then, then, what I'm trying to say is right now, we've spent closer to 300,000 correct contract returns.
And keep in mind that the budget wasn't adjusted a couple meetings back, we took 90,000 dollars in salary benefits to put it in the bottom for the professional services. So 90,000 was taken from the top to the bottom.
So, Mr. Chairman, then, is it correct that what we're paying for the contract attorney is more because we only have one attorney?
Would you have a whole firm representing us, which probably been some expenses? And how do we have a remedy that we attributed? That we could have controlled expenses better? For example, we didn't have that nuisance ordinance, we spent 1,700 dollars and still in draft format. We spent some other bigger ticket things for different personnel matters too that were that were unexpected, so we had some unexpected things that probably drove up that price as well.
Is it the same then, as if you would have had two attorneys, or?
It's probably about the same, we would have had two attorneys.
It's about the same, I mean, you know, just from my perspective, whatever that's worth, I think we're getting a lot more done.
A lot more done with our current situation, and it's costing us about the same, but others would disagree on that.
I guess my, 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 my question is that if we want to see projects that we're, signs that we give on legal counsel on differentiation, we need to make sure that we use their time properly and not have something to sit on the shelf for nine months because we're just going to draft for them. So whenever we ask them to propose something, we need to make sure that it's something that has enough value that you can expedite and get it done. I mean, pay even 20,000 dollars to see if organs that really have a whole lot of temperature.
There's buying majority of commission.
Yeah, I think that's best for the advantage of their time, and that would bring the cost down for us at the end of the day. So this is to make sure that we keep that in our future budgets for legal counsel.
So our next one is our project manager fund, this is basically what we pay for your salary from. So we'll see, last year, we had expenses of 71, we're at about 72,000 this year, or 65% of the budget. And our county purchasing fund, last year, we had expenses of 176,000, now we have expenses of 172,000. In April, we were able to do a lot of buyouts on our Xerox leases, so we'll try to get a little bit more comparable to the budget. But right now, they're at 74% of the budget, so she'll probably more than likely get her budget. And our county fleet department, last year, we had expenses of 357,000, to this year's expenses of 446,000 attributed to the fact that they're incurring the costs for our solid waste network for now. So right now, they're about 73.41% of the budget. Our operations administration is new for this fund this cycle. We actually have three employees hired on-site for this one, so we have no actuals as of last year. But right now, the salary benefits total is 112, and then they have a small operating budget with expenditures totaling 116, or about 70% of the budget. Our county complex fund, last year, we had expenditures of 242,000 dollars. This year, we have expenditures of 299. One of the biggest things that happened from last year to this year is our maintenance contracts. We had a couple bills that we didn't pay for a couple months, so the 113, our actions, were 145,000, that's pretty much where we should be. So this fund's about 70.51% of the budget. And our MIS department, last year, we had expenses of 124,000, this year, we had expenses of 149,000. Now, we have three full-time employees, last year, they started off the third person a little bit later, this year, that's where the salaries were a little bit lower last year than this year. They're about 67.82% of the budget. Our county finance department is next, last year, we had expenses of 499,000, now we're down to 454,000 dollars, or about 67% of the budget as of March 31st. Our county fire chief, we pay the salary from this fund of our fire chief. Last year, we had expenses of the 52,000, now we have expenditures in the amount of 66,000, because we also paid the fire marshal from this fund. So they're about 54.45% of the budget right now. And our animal control, last year, we had expenditures of 177,000, this year, we have expenditures of 195,000. The real change this year is we actually have a standard program earlier, the meter.
Commissioner, before you change, please, this is going to be the first time.
Okay. So one thing that would happen is we have a standard program, so that's what the 12,500 expenditure hit this year versus last year. And we just have one schedule now in name.
Thank you.
Okay, so right now, they're about 67.86% of the budget.
Back on that, my understanding is in the last one that said that it's county-wide tax that feeds this correctly, I mean, correct?
No.
This is the special, I mean, GRT.
Well, if you look at the revenues, it's a property tax.
So why aren't you limiting it to?
County residents.
And don't those municipal residents pay property tax, state share GRT as well?
I did see that restriction on the notice that went out regarding the standard program.
I mean, in our goal to reduce the pet population, that's what makes it all work.
Yeah. The spay neutering, you know, we keep trying to spend some money on spay neutering, but we never have any luck spending it.
Well, then also, when we restrict it, we're telling them we don't want to do it. By saying it's only county, non-municipal.
Right, 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 yeah, I agree.
I think our commission's goal was to spay neuter as many as we could.
Wherever they live.
The dogs don't know that.
Yeah, I, I have two very intelligent dogs, but they don't know they live in the city. But they're all taken care of, I'm, I'm just, I'm just baffled, meaning that our goal was to help control the pet population, and we're not doing it.
And I'll give you, I'll give you a perfect example, and I think you've read that, Commissioner, that was it. The request that has a welfare ordinance for domestic animals, all the pets, and it's very difficult for us in a small community to try to provide the services. So anything that the county can do to support that, you know, it'd be unfair to just have a custom residence, continue to have, I don't know, farm day, just grown up to several, still, and just have pets. So I'd rather just see us kind of work collaboratively to make it happen. We do have, we are, you know, basically tied with our employees, but we don't have that kind of, so anything that can be a county-wide program?
Well, what pays for that comes from the entire county, so I don't understand that we restrict.
And we'd be happy to increase that budget, but we don't seem to find a way to effectively spend that money. I mean, 25,000 dollars is not huge for an issue that important.
Right, I don't understand it. And how much of that 12,000 did we actually spend? Vice Chair, if you can say?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if we were to include Questa, the townhouse, so then, then we would need more money in this fund. And if I'm understanding correctly, you have not, we're at 12,500, you have included the spay neutering that's taking place now, in May, which will, what does that cost to have that banned, do you know?
I think it's 65,000, and it comes down.
So then, we're what, 19, we're still, it still hasn't been fully expended, and what I hear is it looks solid. I mean, if you don't call right away to get your animals spayed or neutered, you're out because the appointments go just like that, so.
But it's also, you need one day. If you're there a whole weekend, you'd probably, you'd stay for a whole weekend.
We're a couple days on this last go-round, but it's, I think we need to reconsider to see realistically how many more can we do.
Better just remember what our goal was, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so restricting it is not achieving our goal, that's my point. Thank you, Chairman, can we, former Chairman? You, you. Former Chairman, can I say? That's, that's a great protest, you know?
So I guess my question then is, would you be able to increase this?
Well, the request for the 2020 is to remain the same, well, more than that in the next presentation. But the request for that control necessary budget is to remain the same at 25,000 dollars.
So please, the commission, can we go at a later time to increase that?
Oh, with this budget, with your budget authority, you can, obviously, stay within budget.
Well, I just, whatever it is about, as Mr. Chairman, it needs to reflect what our overall goal.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, so our last fund in the general fund is our emergency management fund. You'll see, last year, they had expenditures of 81, now they're a little bit higher, 90,000 dollars. They are at 80% of the budget. Some of the things that happened this fiscal year, it's our theme on governance reduced as far as the salary portion of it. So in the next budget cycle, we have to do a split on the map a little bit different. So right now, before the this year comes to a close, I'll probably have to do a budget adjustment to allocate more money into full-time positions. Because you'll see right now, March 31st, they're at 81%, they should be at 75, so I'm going to have to do a budget adjustment before the this year comes to a close. And this one concludes the general fund departments. The next one is the break, is our third quarter report. So April 20th. So April 22nd, I submitted the DFA quarterly report on the LGDMS software. This report included the DFA third quarter report ending March 31st. It included the financials of report adjustment schedule and the investment schedule required reporting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
How would you like the new system?
I like it only because they made some changes. Now that the third quarter, that kind of our, we're a little stressed into the new strip. So in the goal, we're a little with those changes more. So these first two pages are basically the recap of each of the funds. So looking at the first column, we have the funds, we have the cash, investments, the revenue to date, the transfers to date, expenditures to date, and balances, any reserves, and then the adjusted balance. So on page two, we have the total of all the funds on the bottom. So you'll see the 29 million, the $5 million for investments, the revenue to date of $37 million. So the next page.
Can you go back up to our reference? Okay.
So what I have to do on the third page, I basically have to do a recap summary. So the third quarter reporting for LGDMS software required all agencies, all local public bodies to report the gross distribution from the tax and rev. So we were always reporting the net distribution to the county, so I had to make adjustments. So I basically had to add a million dollars into revenue, making it $37 million. And I also had to back it out on the expenditure side at the million dollar mark. But when you look at the treasuries by national report, which controls around the bottom, the difference of that is what I added. So I basically had to add and then offset it. So I wanted to make you aware that the adjustments to the revenue and expenditures offset the differences that I have to add into the LGDMS software, leaving us with the variance on the right-hand side, which I have in the bed of the $11.37. That's been there since the beginning only because the cash is all whole dollars. They don't have pennies or cents on there. So that's attributed to the cash balance. So right now, the report was submitted to DFA on April 22nd with the adjustments. This is actually the adjusted reporting schedule. I have to reflect that million dollar mark on. So what I did is I added the $267,000 as an adjustment with the notation to property account for surety admin expense distributed to the county and expect back to the agency. So we never see the money, it just, we have to do the recording of it. The bottom part of it is the regional transit. I had to include that amount. I had to include the amounts that would also get to the water and sanitation districts, which we have two, El Prado and then Vaya. So that total adjustment is $1 million there on the bottom. That was what I added to LGDMS to the balance. The next one is, this isn't on our treasure, but will reflect the actual how much we earn as investment income. This is just to show DFA how much we have invested. So as our treasure comes back before you enter the quarter report for the investment committee, she'll actually tell you how much investment income they receive from the funds. So looking at the GRT distributions, River County for January, February, March, you'll see the pie chart demonstrated here. Then you'll actually see the amounts of the distributions. So for January, February, March, Taos County received a $3.6 million. The $117,000 is what tax and rev keeps before it comes to us. And then Taos County has a lot of our GRT debts intercepted before it even comes to us. So in our coffers, we've been $1.9 million. I have the breakdown of distributions on the bottom for the intercepts because we intercept money through the edge GRT, the fire room that we have, the solid waste, which is that $52,000 that we're considering here. We intercept that same amount every month. And then for our refinancing of our loans, about $180,000 between two separate funds. So the breakdown on the intercepts, the 1.5 ties to the breakdown on how they actually get spent of the $1.5 million. The next 27 pages, I won't go over, but this is the detail from LGDMS that's broken down by fund and category. That kind of just gives you the breakdown of the municipal fund and the summary totals. But it is provided as part of the courtesy. And once this report is approved, I'll also make it in our county website as part of our quarter reporting. So this concludes this presentation.
Permission, Mr. Chairman, to take a 10-minute break?
So move for 10-minute break.
Permission being made, a second, expected. It is 11. Flora Dean will be back in 11. It's me. Take a quick break, see if we can use more hours. All right. It is 11:29. I've seen the motion, the court. So we'll see if it's a matter of breaking this up. Second, motion, second demand, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McInnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Fenn?
Yes.
I just tried to go on.
Yes.
Chairman Gerges?
Yes. All right, Mr. Martinez, we're approaching.
So now we're going to roll into 2020 interim budget. Keep in mind, this is the initial financial review. Still waiting for some of our departments to give the other budget requests. So I may do with what I have. So bear with me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Which department's due to turn in our budget?
I think it's the U.S. after.
Okay.
I'm getting in the spot.
Okay. It sounds like a long answer. Okay.
So the interim budget summary. So right now, we're just going to kind of go for the certified values that we see for the budget. Overall, the general fund increased about 3.92, attributed to the property tax increase, the investment income, and the administrative fees. This is the first year that Taos County will be charging the 207 funds a fiscal agent fee. About $53,550 will come into our coffers from that fund. The expenditures in our general fund increased overall about 4.04%. We did have experience in the impact. We have still 501, which required a parallel inquiry increase of about 0.25%. The comp fund is still on hold at this time. And for budget purposes on the interim budget, that would be using the March 31st. So I have 19 actuals that we just went over. So if you ever go on DFA's website, they also have a final valuation broken down by county. So it's highlighted in blue and I have the red arrows to where I plug into our workbook. So the residential values that they have are the 925, and the non-residential are 567. That's a total of $1.4 billion on the right-hand side that I have to hold start to. Those two numbers get plugged into this workbook with the, we plug in the operating rate and the collection rate of 91.5%. That would generate revenue this fund of the 11, 200, 330,000. So last year's budget on the 2019, we used the same collection rate and we had different values. So that generated 10.7. With the new values that we plug into this formula and operating rate adjusted according to the rates that were submitted last year, the rates, the result in an amount of 11.2 million or an increase of $495,000. All this information is available on the website. The link is below. A little bit of historical, Chairman. So the last three years of the valuations from 2016, 2017, and 2018 are demonstrated below. I am proud to say that our new assessor will be presenting to you her evaluation fund for 2019. So you'll be getting your report from her very soon. So then we'll have some 2019 numbers. She does have a projected growth that everything we're all wanting to see, and she'll share that with us on her report coming soon. The fund will go over now as the general fund. So the general fund, you guys all know that the majority of the money comes from the property tax that we collect, which right now is about 84%. We have some other revenue, small revenue that we have, fees collected, the small counties assistance, the charities, which contribute 9% of the budget, and then other miscellaneous fees. So looking at the snapshot, if we were to estimate coming in on the interim budget on the top right-hand side, we estimate coming in as $6.2 million of cash. Of that, 3.2 will continue to be maintained and invested by our treasury office. The increases on the right-hand side, you'll see them. So if I increase the 91.5% collection rate to 11.2 million, that's what gave you the $495,000 increase. The administrative fees, that's where you'll see that increase of $53,550. This money will come from the 207 fund. And then down beyond the small counties assistance. Last year, I budgeted 192. We brought in 196, so a budget 196. So that's what gave you the 3.92 collection and the increase in revenues, which was 552,000. So you guys see that. Of that budgeted revenue, $14 million, we are going to anticipate the transfers to transpire to the detention in amounts $2 million. Our public works will receive $400,000. Our EMS ambulance, that increased that by 60,000. Last year, we had 40, though because of the short calls that are being experienced, that increased it by 60,000. The senior citizens is the 84,730. And historically, we've been giving the DWI $20,000 as a transfer in. We don't transfer this, they need. And that's one thing I want you guys to know, it's only upon need. The transfers in, that 416,124, that money comes from the magistrate parties that we have. So the next year, they pay it as monthly rent. We use that to pay part of the loan. And this amount goes into the general fund at the end of the fiscal year.
Mr. Martinez, Chairman, this commission just keep in mind with the COVID, the state of the world consolidation. This is one of the reasons we're opposed to the magistrate and court combining because we would lose this 160,000 in revenue and our R2 minutes to spend. It also pays the debt service for the buildings as well.
So about 160,000 is needed to be for the budget work. Then we also have the projected revenues and the expenditures coming in at $12,472,344. So as is taken into consideration, the departments that have checked their budget worksheets and we plug in the numbers, right now, we would have a balanced budget. I would be asking for people to date. The way the expenditures are broken down, pretty much are the same as last year. If you look at last year's chart to this year's chart, there's no real difference. The sheriff receives the 20% of the budget, the county treasurer the 5%, manager 5%, administration 7%, attorney 4%, finance and purchasing receives 12%, operations 7%, elections 1%, human resources 2%, IT 2%, planning and zoning receives 5% of the budget, animal control 2%, the government 26% only because we pay most of the insurances from your fund. And then first, the property has the smallest, so right now she doesn't create another percent pileage. And our county accessory receives 10%, and our county clerk receives 4% of the budget. The way those numbers are broken down on the next slide. So what I did last year is I pulled the 2019 budget for each of the funds in the general fund. I added in what the expenditure were coming out to through the 2020 budget cycle, and then load some differences on the right-hand side. All in all, the general fund increased about $501,000. So you guys can look at those individually. Keep in mind that there are some things we're still waiting for. I took comp plan to get penned out. I did prepare a statement. I think at this time, I'll be it. While Taos County will be nice on prior year, proper evaluations to conduct a new budget. Fiscal year 20 provides for non-munions positions with the increase in general fund revenue of approximately 3.92% or $552,000 respectively. Taos County was able to absorb the impacts of hospital vital and increasing the employer contribution rate by 25%, which preliminary estimates result in an increase of about $65,000 from prior year. Taos County's health insurance has also increased $225,000 from prior year due to the fact that union negotiations are ongoing at this time and the comp plan is pending a final review. The residual balance was set aside for the comp plan initiative. Several departments requested increase to their employee training plan, printing and publishing, maintenance of equipment, or maintenance of vehicles. As Taos County continues to acquire buildings, utility costs have increased as well as maintenance of those buildings. Every year, every other year, New Mexico County surveyed to be strong contracts for building inspection and appraisal reports. This year's report was completed by the same firm that did it two years ago, Delta Develops. Our yearly payroll exposure reflected wages for 2018 of $9.9 million. So I put that there just so you guys can know that the external agencies that we deal with, they actually review our commercials to make sure what we follow up on. So when they generate their fair share of how much the distribution is for insurance liabilities, they determine it based on the property acquisitions that we have and our payroll exposure that we pay to our employees. Below is listed the full-time employees that were not able to be funded for 2020 due to budget constraints. We did have requests from the sheriff's office for six sheriff deputies. Each person would come in at $67,000 times six, which would equal $406,000. I wasn't able to bill that in. I also wasn't able to put in an MIS technician. And I also was not able to include a planning technician that was near by our planning department. Taos County's general fund absorbs, had to absorb the cost of the OEM coordinator as the FEMA grant was reduced. Therefore, the salary benefits needed to be put into the general fund. But they also were able to acquire some luggage and equipment that they needed to manage their facilities from the FEMA grants that they were awarded in the fiscal year 2019. The LAPF fund, which is our law enforcement protection fund, increased by $1,800 as a direct result of three of our officers receiving their law enforcement certificates. And then Taos County has recently noticed that the Secure Rule Systems, or SRS, distribution were reduced by 6.2% due to the federal sequester that recently happened. And this usually sets the trend for other federal distributions to the county. So we'll probably see some decreases coming to some of our federal laws.
Yes, Commissioner. So if we increased the non-budget that we sent to DFA, which we can still have room to do under the allowable percentages, then we could afford some additional hires that we may well need, right? And I mean, the MIS, a planning technician, those seem like really important positions. Sheriff's department, maybe not six deputies, but some. I think that we may need those positions and that we could afford them if we increase the budget that we send to DFA. Or if we use reserves. I guess reserves are tricky because it's recurring expenses.
We couldn't use reserves for solvency.
We can't use reserves because it's recurring. So that, the only option that leaves us then is increasing our budget that we send to DFA. Problem with that is that it has the potential to increase people's property taxes. But there's a lot of factors involved there, the payment valuations and increases and this way. But my fiscal will be able to figure that out. But it would be nice for us to know how that would affect people's property values so that we can make a decision about whether or not to increase that amount so that we can afford some of these positions that we argue we need.
Commissioner Fenn, did you want to go first?
Me.
Plus, something that's hot topic for all of us, that we've been talking a lot about lately. If we truly want to fix our detention center, we need to get in the business of being able to be on the same line with other detention centers that the lowest in the state pays. If we want the first step in fixing our detention center, we got to start paying our employees for what they do. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I thought we attempted to fix that in a resolution that allows a $1,500 bonus for new sign-ups. So that was partially?
That was a retention, a retention pay. It wasn't a bonus, but it was giving the detention officers 5% of their annual salary to be employed with county for up to a year. And those are going to process today if not in the year.
And then that would include new hires? Do you get that?
No.
No, it's just current?
One-time rate.
One-time rate, okay. No, I, okay, I, I'll wait.
I guess I'll ask the question. We got two of our two favorite legislative officials here to help us out here with some of this stuff. You know, you have the U.S. direct commissioner, Mike's appointed. Those rates go up. Does that make sense? Or are we looking at being able to put enough boots on the ground to get a full assessment throughout the county? So probably areas that do not have, there are areas to completely evaluate it. There's money to be left on, left on the ground that you don't need. Kind of one of the things where you, we're going to put a lot of grit on these two departments to try to build that budget with this. Put firm, big numbers there. But I think it's, kind of has to kind of play out with multiple rules. Figure out what the names of voices are to be given to people that they need to do services and provide emergency services. And we're going to continue to see EMS what we've been happening to our general fund. We're expecting CES and those transfers and that's kind of what we're. So everything's had a combination of things, and it's not something that's easy to get together. Just, it could be always be high on property taxes to be a. Just it could always be high on property taxes to be a driver. You know, I can be out here, you know, we have to try to find another way of stimulating revenue. In the county, they find anything else to stimulate that. So I'm not much of an idiot or off, but I think that there's other things that we can probably pre utilize to create some income.
It's only 9% of our other is charity.
24% property. What's your, this is what I've been doing for several years inside dinner. I mean, it's not like we've been raising the budget much.
No, we have helped expenses and check. Four, four or five years, probably ever since we've been on the commission's appointment, six years. We've helped expenses and check. We tweaked it, just built slightly. We've tried to reduce some supplies and things that we can manage and try to build a little more efficiencies.
Commissioner.
And our county assessor. And I understand one way to raise revenues is to make sure commercial properties are assessed at the correct fair market value. Also to find those properties that were never on the tax rolls. And they are out there. And my understanding is they can go back 10 years or charge property taxes. So, I mean, that's a tool that our assessor, I'm sure, will use. Because I heard her say some of her priorities were to start first where you bring in the most money. And that includes making sure all the commercial properties in the town tax and in the county, and there aren't that many in the county. We'd see, but to do those reassessments first. And we may see, we don't know until we get out there, you know, we may see substantial revenue coming in.
Yes. You know, if we were successful in those efforts and we did increase the budget that we sent to the B F A, then it would not have a adversity on property owners. There's other factors that go into it. Those valuations increase as collections are better. As there are more building permits and more properties that are developed. Then you can increase the budget without increasing the burden on citizens. And, but you can't do it unless you increase the budget, right? So I'm in favor of a modest increase in what we send to the B F A. And I'd like to know why we shouldn't.
Chairman, Commissioner, yes, it's the will of the commission to can increase our collection rate. Is that the only thing that we can dial up on the revenue side? I know the treasurer is not in favor of that. That's one thing that we can increase besides going back to all the departments and asking for decreases in their budgets to offset the position requests.
Mr. Chairman, I
Yes.
I saw a few people shaking their heads. Could, Ms. Garcia? And Mr. Hill, could you come up and explain why you don't think there's a benefit to say going from 91.5 to say 92? I mean, could someone explain how that works? Could you come to the mic?
I'll go ahead and stand. I'm Susan, treasurer, and this is Paula. Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioner, and you and I, we have had this discussion. We've actually, the treasurer's office, we've gone through this cycle, that we've had a discussion with with some of the commissioners that have come to us asking what the status is on the rates and how it would affect the property count. And as we're looking now, we had, we had looked at the 91.5 and that's a collection rate that we feel that we can regain successfully. But then what Paula just noted, and again, looking at the residential, there is. I'll go ahead and let her explain that portion of it. And there is possibility for an increase, but I'll let her explain to you all what the impact would be.
Commissioner, you don't need to increase the collection rate too, because we're not going to collect more than 91.5%. Certainly, we haven't. The only time that we do is if there's protests that come in after the fact. You know, visually, we might, we can see that coming after, so I can press above the 91.5%. Which that residential rate, which is still an increase, change, but you can play with that residential rate basically to increase to what you want to set it at to the revenue you want. Your max stock on your mod rest, so you can't touch that anymore. If you're statutory, you can't do that. But on residential, you could go up to 25%. It puts the burden on the residential property owners, but instead of increasing the rate or the collection rate, you could increase the tax rate on the residential. Because that is something that you guys have discretion of setting the quarter.
It's currently 5.9 and you're allowed to go up to 11 or something.
11.5 is not.
I'm certainly not suggesting that we do that. But there are factors, even if you raise that rate, there are factors which can still keep the property taxes on individual owners down to where they wouldn't be increased if you get increased valuations. You know, what you're saying is 91.5 just even because that's as much as we're going to get.
My concern is if you increase it to 92.9, you're going to increase on paper for a hundred percent. At the end of the year, you're going to get a next.
I'm guessing that we go up above the 5.9.
I get it. Have you? So for correction, you had a steady 91.5% collection rate. If the rate was less, you would be a hundred second to 11 and be according to the pay.
What keeps our collection rate down is basically no trust care loss lots. What keeps our collection rate low is all the trust care loss lots and all the, you know, such high dividends now. You know, up on that area is 13,000, those accounts. So even if you were to drop it, we're not going to really go up until those lots are taken care of and paid for. Because the majority of your residential companies that are paying, it's just that we have such a high divinity rate on that side. That brings our collection rate down.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question in relation to that? I know this is just out there.
Yeah, okay, so let's not get too loud up there.
If we condemned all those properties out there that are vacant, would that help us in any way?
Well, apparently the state has, it was the House of Laboring Fund, E D Y, that they're looking into how they consolidate these properties to sell them and to either, that or you don't want to get land force or somewhere else, you can just get them off the books. But it's a process to get to that point.
But do they have the trades to do it now? I'd like to talk about this later.
Sure. Okay, so I always recognize, I mean, you guys are buying it all because of that rate of interest. So if I trust in what Paula's saying, if we can go, you know, maybe we put a 92 or something, I should come up with that. So that goes back to the other side of it and the revenue. We got to stop listening to the same 50 people that come every time there's any development, any kind of business. I mean, the town just wanted to attract your supply. Why is it that a perfect place, we're going out on the way to the gorge, you think? We made it too difficult. Our historic is we turned out all commercial stuff, so they came to the town. That's, I'm sorry, because we listen to the same 50 people that come into this building and we don't give ourselves an opportunity to boost charity. If we boost charity, there's our pay plan, there's all the other stuff, there's our expansion, there's our other deputies, there's our MIS and our planning. But no, we listen to the same 50 people. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, what I hear is we need to revisit our L U R and see where and why there's such a backlog or holdup with people who want to re-permit their properties. And then the issue is where are these people going to find land in the county that's ready to go?
And on that, what she just said, it takes 72 hours to get a solar array approval through the Land Administration and Dona County, which is doing the work. How long does it take us here? Not 72 days? Close to 72 months. Those are things that are good for us. Those are things that are going to save us and we make it too difficult to get. The construction off of what the solar arrays and stuff is going to bring in the interim is enough to get us over the whole world, but no, we make it too difficult. Commissioner, Paula, we haven't listened to the same 50 people.
So we are going to have a L U R in pretty soon that's significant, that will make it easier for businesses. That's coming up this spring and that'll be good. I agree with Commissioner Pendel certainly. When do we end up submitting our operating tax rate at 5.969? When is, when do we have to do that?
So that rate is very recent, the question.
Correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is we have to pass a resolution saying we're increasing it by X meal and then we'll put it out into the budget and send a resolution to the tax and rev. That way they account for it for the next fiscal year.
For starting in July?
Starting in July, yes.
And our deadline for doing that, if there's any appetite for that? Is?
Well, I think now it may would be the latest.
May would be the latest.
Can I ask something? I think that an analysis that I can be done, as to see what the increase would be, let's say went up 1%. What would that generate? Because usually if we look at the, in increasing the collection rate, it's usually like 200,000. Well, what would the tax rate in increasing the, uh, basically, yes, the residential? What would that be, you know, for each increment? And with, what kind of money are you going to need to offset the expenditures that you do have? But also, what impact does that have?
And can you get us those numbers?
I think all of the finance department, the treasurer, the assessor will need and will kind of figure out a rate.
Yeah, if you can present those ballpark numbers to us sometime in May, then we can think about it.
And Mr. Chairman, why is it set at this rate now? Can someone give me historical perspective?
Those rates are, if you actually go onto the website, you can actually do the property tax facts. They do history. They have it 10 years back. You can pull 2018 and you'll see where those rates are at. You can see rates compared to counties and majors.
These goes up every year.
And is this comparable to the rate is for other counties on residential?
They have actually provided us with the history tax maximum. And that one is, it gives you a simple rate is for residential and on rest for county.
I can email it to you. It's about a 47-page document. It's not hard.
And so, but why is that? I mean, I'm trying to understand why is it? Well, they probably look at trends and history and collections and they make their analysis based on that.
Wait, when you see that your budget, that's what you're, so those little numbers, you're setting your rate? That's what, so property tax is taking that rate and you're telling them you need $11.2 million to operate. So when the assessor submits her final numbers, that at that point, whether they go up or down, then you'll send the final rate on your rates. So you give them this rate to tell them how much you need. And then they have final numbers for the assessors, they set the final rate to make sure you achieve that, you know, $11.2 million.
So you're setting the rate, the rate is set by the B F A?
Yes.
But would you have to tell them how much money you need by the current rate, which is my current, you're telling them this is at current, at current property values, at current rates, this is how much money you need. And so if the values go down, well then your rates are going to go up. If the values go up, your rates are going to go down.
So that's why we need the three offices working together to get this, to get these numbers to be able to give to you, to be able to know what kind of money this is going to generate.
And I think, I think it would be very informative. If you just have a slight conversation, we should like to make it this. It'll be heartfelt to those, you know, where, where county, you know, high, we have low job creation. There's a lot of things weighing against us to not try to leave on property tax, you know, that. It's probably going to be a little bit more creative with everything else that we fund overall because until we start seeing some kind of economic opportunities coming in, it's hard to swallow. I'd rather just sit on the little computer of fast eating belts than try to draw something out. You guys, staff, and all the way around, we feel like there's always a need for you all at the same point, you know. It's an impact on residents as well.
But you also have the risk that you run it too high with your, you know, maybe this year, the delinquents, you know.
And actually, I'd like to make a point is that we work aggressively of those delinquents. And that we're looking at other numbers and we bring in probably from 400 to 500,000 dollars every year just saving, I mean, just targeting the delinquents and the interest and penalties that we want to keep before they go to the state. So we don't want that burden, we don't want that to increase. And as it is, I was talking to this lady yesterday that came in and again, their concerns are paying their delinquent taxes. And usually what they do is like right now, they're paying the 16 and they just pay that year. But they're accruing interest and penalties on top of that and that's huge. It depends on the amount of money owed, but if, so when it, it just, much is for them. But if for some reason it goes to the state, there's an additional 125 dollars that's tagged on to that account. And then if for some reason it's picked up by taxation and rev or property tax where they count and they pick up that, they'll have to come up with the money in bulk and 100%. So, you know, we're working on this side, trying to work with our constituents, our taxpayers, our property owners to be able to have them safeguard the assets that they do have the most.
Well, I want to say that it's not just property owners that are using our services that that $14 million are going to pay for. Renters don't pay property tax. Transits don't pay property tax, but they use our services. We want to get the money from them for the services that we're providing for them through law enforcement, through ambulance, through softball, all of that stuff. We've got to do something about charity. So I'm beating a dead horse here. But don't everybody pay charity? Only the property owners pay, I mean, but everybody uses the services. So if we want to get somebody to help us with our services, we need to increase charity. We have the highest charity case in the state. I know, we got to get more sources for charity. The sources, not, not, I know we can't raise our charity, I realize that, but we need more sources. And that also will bring our property values, because we've got a building that's paying more property tax than a vacant field. So why is it not a winner? Ladies, thank you for thought and kind of giving us an explanation as to what.
I just also wanted to say that we, the sheriff's office, we have worked to look at the source of the provision. Our money market is bringing close to $300,000 in interest in addition this year, if not my share.
And the things that we've been, we were looking at even just offsetting the, now that the convenience that we should store as, as. that the convenience we should store as, as an end chart, we're not doing that anymore, and that's approximately nine hundred, ninety thousand every year. And so it's just that we look at everything that we can possibly do to be able to, to bring that, which the Treasury's office has not done in the past, but even, like I said, three hundred thousand in, in those investments, I think it was nineteen thousand for the energy fund? That's huge, you know, for whatever we can do, and I think we're looking at another fund, if we can possibly invest their money. But again, it, it takes all of us, but I really like the idea of the GRT, again, you know, it's another way that we can operate.
We don't have that directly under our, oh, so, in May, not directly, but we're going to help with the LUR, but can we get, in May, can we get us an agenda item, so we can see what, at one point, bring us, and how it would affect property taxes? I know there's protections for people who are at the low end, ancianos have protections, veterans. I'd just like to know a little bit more about, you know, how much could it possibly bring in, and how would it affect our citizens?
Yes, what do you do that for?
So, Mr. Chairman, under the non-residential, which is commercial property, is that correct? Could that zero point one one be raised?
It's, it's like eleven point five percent, that's max, it's also...
That's our max? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Some of the capital requests that have come in, sorry, initial requests, I know that they're not competing yet, or submitted yet, but right now, I have requests for planning software, a rain plate machine for our fee department, a towing truck for our fee department, mobile data terminals for our shares department, two law enforcement vehicles for our shares department, two patrol motorcycles for our shares office, and O M vehicle, we need to replace two USB ports in different rooms, this is an IT request, we also need new semantic firewall, a Type six brush truck was mentioned during one of the admissions recently, along with some new fire equipment, two V vehicles, and we're waiting for the public works capital outlay projects to come through, as far as the request for 2020 budget cycle. What's new, upcoming in the 2020 interim budget, local public bodies are all required to report administrative fee, like I mentioned earlier, one of the things I'm going to do is I'm going to establish the two three two fund, which tracks and monitors the county educational GRT. Right now I have it associated in a Form 02 fund, and that's a debt service, we're the only county in the state that has this tax, and so when I submit my budget back to it, I call, where's the county educational GRT that's associated with the fund? So for the 2020 budget cycle, I'm going to establish the two three two fund, that will give the GRT for the educational portion.
Which part, yes, but we, the local children's schools, where is that?
So the classes that happened this year, we solved the 2018 series with the GRTs, so the seven point seven million dollars, so the requests come through the county. So I have a couple schools, I did like requisition, like fifteen items, so as the schools purchase their capital requests or purchases, they submit media and work, and then I have to send them off to N F A to get paid. So this 2012 or 2013 series was a little different, 2013 series, the schools were able to direct the bill, N F A, and then N F A paid their bills. 2018, the process changed, the county's more small, so we see the invoices beforehand, and we pay them after we have. So we will have, we have other activity as far as the GRT goes for 2019.
And there's only a couple more years left on that date, so you guys are going to have to watch that really closely after another one.
It's a half percent. So in your line item, this or in this administrative fee, do we, do we have a TID administrative fee established yet?
Not yet, well, I have to come back to it in May, the director of administration to actually present that to you.
Because that will bring you more revenue.
The other fund that was established for 2020 cycle is a fund called seven oh three zero zero, it's, it goes receipts taxes, health for others, keep in mind, even though we are the collecting agency, we don't actually get them from here, so it comes to us, and then it gets distributed right away. So those are the two new funds that I'll be establishing in 2020 interim budget. The first fund we'll open is our corrections fund, so right now, as of March, we're first willing to borrow twenty seven thousand five twenty-one, before the fiscal year comes to a close, we'll probably get another quarter payment on that, whatever amount comes in, we'll transfer it before fiscal year comes to a close, this money goes directly to the detention, I haven't initiated any transfers, both of the new budget will project the same revenue and the same transfers out. And our two oh three fund, this is our prospect evaluation fund, administered by our Assessor's office, this is the one percent, they have no real changes in the new budget request, but I did account for the para increases in this fund, as well as the transportation, other commercial services, and just the balance, and there's basically net at that end. Our two oh fours, our public works fund, our public works fund, we anticipate this fund to start with a four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, like I mentioned earlier, we just received notification from SRS that the funding will be coming in, not private sweep, if not next week, the amount is going to be about two hundred thousand dollars, so we'll schedule that to add to their cash balance, and then transferring it back to the general fund. Their operating budget pretty much remains the same, they did ask for an increase in maintenance and repairs for grounds and roadways, so you'll see I increased it ninety-two thousand two hundred eighty dollars there, increasing the overall expenditure from last year to this, for the 2020 cycle, one point eight million dollars, which is about a five percent increase.
Question?
Commissioner, question. So I was going to do that.
Do you calculate that the motor vehicle administration fee has gone up from three point five to five, I, I'm sorry, three point five to four percent?
This, this one isn't from the material fee, this is what we collect from the motor vehicle division, that we pay a fee every time we get our vehicles registered, we pay a fee, this is separate revenue, so we're not projecting any real changes to the revenue. On the top, the only thing that we are going to decrease is the sale of fixed assets, because we did sell a lot of items this fiscal year, so next year's budget, I'll project an increase of two thousand dollars per year for the bigger pieces of equipment that we're able to this year, so I increase revenue two thousand dollars with next year's budget, but everything else stays the same, aside from the increase of transfers into this fund, which will come from the one oh three fund, not the general fund.
I'd like to see our real money go into the growth fund completely.
Yeah, this is one fund that we could use reserves, because if we missed, there would be recovery. If we had a list of priority, prioritized projects, then we all agree upon. Some of the, you know, some of the roads that we paved in the last ten years, the holding are pretty good, but they won't unless we seal them. I don't want to either district, I want to hold Cali, any gate district, I'm sure there's, plenty of others, we are going to burden the future commissions if we don't seal them, because those cracks get bigger every year, water gets in, it freezes, you know how that goes. So we, you know, if we had a good list that we could look at, some extra fill on roads in every district that needs them, and sealing some of those paved roads, I would really be in favor of tapping into some of our excess reserves, if we had a list of projects that we could agree on.
Yes, so the ninety-two thousand does represent an increase in the bag material for the pothole machine, the West Rim Road is getting sealed, the graphic improvements for that should be coming in this week, and so it'll be the September project, so we'll seal that road and crack seal it as well, and the three ninety-nine covers the, the projects.
But should we consider, I'm just asking, should we consider a list of priorities that might tap into a portion of our reserves? Is that something that this board wants to look at? You know, is that something that you would recommend to us?
Just from a staff perspective, yes, we'd recommend using anything from reserves, we're going to need general fund reserves to, to work on Blueberry Hill Road, and we need some, probably, of the last year, we can start planning, now we're moving on it.
We could definitely work on getting you a list, you can actually see I'm broken down by district, as far as the planned upcoming projects for the 2020 cycle.
And a cause, so we can see whether or not we want to use some of our reserves to beat those projects, and I, I feel comfortable with that, Commissioner Black, if I'm wrong.
The one thing we don't want to do is put fifty thousand here, fifty thousand there, have everything just pocketed and not get anything actually completed, so I think it's, it should be, again, we should try to do this as uniform as we can, focus on one, you're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars on one home, we get it, and we don't have to go back and put fifty thousand dollars in passion to everything, because you just did it, you know, without completing it, so I'm cool with that, I think it's a great idea, it's important, but we try to be, as, we don't have our public works department out there, you know, they're like duck, they're trying to put their foot in there, we don't have a cover on, or I mean, ducks fish, takes brown.
Yeah, but, of course, we have a good plan, a good plan.
Do they, on this year, I'm just asking, like, supplies, furniture fixtures, equipment, we budget seventeen thousand, we spent five, do we have to budget that much?
No, they actually asked for some cows and some of the equipment for the late and stuff.
So that'll work, that'll come through there, okay.
Yeah, the smaller non-capital requests, we try to have the wages absorb them, the larger capital purchases, we try to put them in three ninety-nine, that will be some on the important side, whether or not the thing will be funded.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would really like to see lower down a road paved, and as much as up and down a road, and that's going to cost you a fortune, so I'd like to see a major paving project in my district, and in my district, we don't have many potholes.
So, so, Vice Chair, so we can go through the full budget, is, we know we're going to have to come back and, 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 I'd like to maybe top us the targeted areas, so let's do that, and actually, because...
We're going to lose Tommy, who has twenty-one, he's showing up.
And just the roads and bridges, only ten thousand, I mean, could you, I have a bridge and a Secia Madre road that needs repair, and I'm sure we have other bridges that need some work, and again, it was my thought, we begin doing engineering studies on these bridges, and we can also go to the capital, national legislative session, and ask for capital outlay money, we have our projects engineer.
Just to remind you, Commissioner, that ten thousand doesn't represent any bridge work, it's more of a place for the, the work, the money for projects comes out of the three ninety-nine fund.
The next one was, I chose this, we're stating this fund, this one took into a proper request from the task evidence, the National Avalanche, settled by our district, and all the tier, Oma, and Depe, and Yasko, Gero, Fernando, Guler, P, and Carson, Alon, and Jonathan, he was able to meet with all the fire districts and get their needs, for the three ones that he does the banking for me, as far as the finance cycles, so he was able to complete this before he went on the surgery today. So the two oh six is actually completed and ready for, actually for adoption, for the next ten, so I think when I, over the other funds that I don't overstate, when I get to that point, I'll, I just skip this one, because this is very complete and intact. Our two oh seven fund is next, this is the fund where I mentioned that we met with the finance subcommittee, where we have, I didn't put any money in on the top as far as cash flows, just so that we can see if the revenue, if the plan to, getting this fund, a million dollars, offsets the expenditures on the bottom, and that's what's most important, the revenues have to support the expenditures, you will see that I did add about fifty-three thousand five fifty, so as our J P A agreement requires us to pay that five percent escalation fee, we hadn't been collecting this in the past, but in 2020 budget, we will budget it, and we'll start extending that. This year, we had our E nine one one director work on his comprehensive review of all the maintenance contracts that, you know, outstanding, that's the reason why you'll see that ninety-four thousand one hundred dollars for maintenance of contracts that he has in place, he has some smaller requests, during the fiscal year, we did adjust the budget twice, one to account for the general liability that this fund should pay, which is twenty thousand dollars, and the second one was for the equipment machine that was purchased in prior fiscal year, that one's a one-time expensive, will not count out in the budget cycle. In the E nine one one fund, we also have to plan for a five-year capital projects fund, we have that fund designed, and we have it ready to go, so for budget purposes on the 2020 cycle, the one thing that will change the mix, and I talk to all this fund, I'm going to include a provision on the bottom that shows that three hundred thousand dollars, breaking it out to the cash, putting it into the capital expenditures that we plan to replace in the 2020 budget cycle, so those will be two changes that you'll see on the E nine one one fund, keeping in mind that this fund has already been approved, I can tell you by the finance that's coming. Our two oh eight is our next fund, it's our farming range fund, we haven't received the federal allocation for this amount just yet, so I basically have operating cash that will carry over, we anticipate a deduction, like I mentioned earlier, those questions that were made, not that much, but on this one, it'll probably get fourteen hundred dollars, let's see what we get in the month of May. We do have a new line item that I created in this fund, it's called the contract other services, so some of the agency requests that Ben went over with you on his county item, his report, was one unique one that came into the town soil and water, so town soil and water has an initiative that they do with the Rock Mountain, where they go out and they clean different, they're setting different parts of their county, they've asked for a commitment, so the way this fiber fund works is that to get approval from the agency, they give this fund out of sight, which is the exception, they've authorized us to use ten thousand dollars for farming range fund for the 2020 cycle, so that's a new line item that I created in this fund. Our next one is our two oh nine, our two oh nine fund, like I mentioned, Mr. Montoya has completed this one, this one represents Amaria, Cerro, Costilla, Mondo, the tier, Oma, Calente, Pinyasco, Gero, Fernando, T P, Guler, P, La Rama, Carson, San Cristo, and Tus County Fire Chief operating budget, this has been completed, and like I said, you say, it's a time to meet with each one individually and collectively, go over all of them, but what's tricky, then putting it all together on this one-page document, because L G B N S only requires it to be on one group total, not individual breakdown by fire district, so everything's grouped together, it's on the back end, but you don't see as many pages of all the data requests, and then summed up on one page. Our two E N N fund is something that I mentioned earlier, we did have three officers that got certified, that's six hundred dollars each, I realize the amount should be forty-four thousand four hundred, and I have forty-four thousand two hundred, so I'll make that two hundred dollar adjustment, next time I come, it'll be forty, and I'll add the two hundred dollars, right, you know, for the law enforcement protection fund.
Commissioner, Vice Chair, hold up, that bill that was at the legislature to increase L A P F, that got vetoed, right?
To reduce what?
L A P F funding for officer, do you recall it? Did she lay out that figure?
I don't recall if you gave me the bill all the way up.
That would be the law enforcement protection fund?
Well, there was a line item for the law enforcement protection fund for the state for sixteen point seven million.
No, I, I have no question. There was a bill that would increase the disbursement per officer, and I think she vetoed that, probably, because...
They get six hundred dollars per officer right now, so they maintain your certification, and so we wonder if the increase happened with...
There was a bill, but I think we didn't ask.
The next one is our wire tax, two fourteen, two fourteen, according to L G B N S constitutes the non-pro and emotional fund, right now, we anticipate start off the fiscal year with two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we anticipate a small increase in the wire tax only, because we've seen that increase happens on the budget, three hundred thousand, and we keep the five thousand dollars for the rental fees, the transfers out remain the same, because we care the service on this fund, and we also transferred our recreation fund, so no, no changes on the transfers, and the operating budget remains the same. One thing that will happen next year is our wire tax will have to pick firms to the additive, so every year, two or three large establishments, they can get an attitude to their, their pressure of wire tax, so the new budget cycle will make sure that gets to be inherited before the fiscal year comes to a close. For the sub grant recipients, you'll see that amount's kind of decreased a little bit, and that's just based on the activity that we have, so when I look at the incumbency report, how much I have, that we haven't paid out, I add that, and so right after the 2020 cycle, I think we've moved on a hundred thousand dollars again for the sub grant recipients.
Is that a value fund?
Yes.
Thank you.
And our two seventeen is our next one, that's our recreational... And our 217 is our next fund, that's our recreation fund. This one is where we're gonna anticipate, starting off, we don't really have to start with cash on this one, but, because the money comes from the lottery tax, but we anticipate start with this, we're all with $5,000. We anticipate to collect some revenue from the rental of the softball fields, so I'm gonna put in 1,400, it's not that much to fit from prior year. The transfers in will remain the same from the lottery tax of 60,000, this will fund one FTE, and it gives them a small operating budget and utilities to pay for the lights and stuff of the softball fields and interduty contracts that we have. So, it's a small operating budget, the total expenditure will be 66,400, zeroing out this fund for 2020. Our 2018 intergovernmental grants, our 218 fund, I am actually still working with my grant staff to try to get the grants that have closed off and will put closed off for this little year. So, you'll see for 2020, I don't have that all computed, because I'm still working my staff on getting grants computed. With the 219 fund, the senior citizens fund, I'm also working on life right now, we, um, we're trying to get AAA on board to give us the amounts, they adjusted the budget three times for us for the SCP, which is our senior employment contract. We also adjusted the DPS to our direct complete servicing contract, and then we also adjusted the NSIP, which is our food contract. So, Samo Kanaba is now the agency area long-term director, there's some, he's very familiar work in life, so he's trying to do what we're asking for, so right now, we're working on the budget. But if anything, um, on this fund, I may have to increase the transfers in depending on the outcome of the request. Our seniors, uh, our healthcare assistance fund is one fund that we're waiting, um, I have not the budget worksheet on this one just yet, but they are probably in my office right now, so I'll work on that this afternoon. Our 221 is our Pop County Hospital Fund, also run by the mill, that we, right now, we project, depending on what happens with the MOU, that we enter to a agreement with, um, next commission meeting, we may have some expenditures that will hit. If they don't hit until the new budget cycle, we anticipate start off with this, we're $1.8 million. The mill rate is set, 1.3 will be the revenue generated, and the contract for expenditures will be about $3.1 million, so we plan it fully cross hospital for 2020 budget cycle, if they don't have any expenditures from now until this fiscal year comes to a close. Our 222, which is our fire exercise tax, um, Jonathan did finish this yesterday afternoon, but I didn't put this on our website, so I wasn't able to put in the information that this fund is already done, I just didn't put it in, I mean. Our 223 DWI fund is one fund that we're still waiting for some graduate students, he's working on getting some, um, adjudication fund, graduate students for temporary worker, he's waiting on his graduate students, so I haven't had nothing to work on that fund. Our clerk recording and filing fund, our detention fund, our county education, this is where you save and create and put it workups to that one. Our 503, dropped up by 6.2% on what should be by that budget. Other couple of projects, once we narrowed down the projects that we'll be presenting to, I can work on that one, but right now, it's tentative, I have the thing on that one. And our 303, there are also our tie to 218 fund, our 402, our business fund, and our 403, our other, I named ones at the bottom, 502 and 505, and the 703, those will be presented to on our next session, this is the budget, but when halfway there, it just takes time to work on the budget and get the information from our departments. So, I apologize, some of the departments still work, it's not completed, but I'm working on all of them. That concludes my year of the conversation for the 2020 cycle.
I want to ask, um, if you can provide, just an equation, what we pay in electric utility bills for all county properties? Um, there was a program, none of it's still open, if your manager may know, there's a program that if you could convert your municipal counties to, uh, to go into solar, to renewables, and provide a job. So, let's say we spent $300,000 a year in the rest of the year, if we could convert that into renewable energy, we could get, I think we could get a lot of that paid for by grant application, probably we could create jobs, we could do with having to pay them. My host, Stan, may be able to help you with that, with the, I know we're trying to, we're not trying to get off, we have that service company, Carson, as a partner, but, uh, if we wanted to be creative, go for job opportunities, if there's that program still available, then we could tap into some of those, some of those expenses that we have in utilities.
I'm not sure that we're going to be able to find your manager, which was, uh, manage a part of what that is, but, uh, I'll talk to him, it's just like this, uh, because we, we weren't going to get Carson, I remember, yeah, there was others, companies that are trying to sell some.
Because, I think there's something in this state that's wrong.
Yeah, there's energy and rules, and there's a tax we made to manage the G I, I think the part of our issue was a large purchase agreement, that, that we need to get off of this, to, to manage that.
Just my, yeah, there's questions in there.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I, $22,000 for the X hammer utility bill, that could easily, we could easily put solar right there, and we could easily put solar in our parking lot, those are two ways to cut our utility costs.
Before I conclude, I just want to, I want to thank Brent and apologize, I know that was a budget season for me, I'm kind of, but I hope in the best I can, I just wanted to thank Brent for being with me during this last two weeks.
So, we'll, we'll cover our two main meetings, we'll also take portions of the budget and go over it, and then we'll have to have a special launch study, and then it's going to the program, it's going to be a day by, by June 1st, so, right now, I think we can get it done, two main meetings, and then have one special meeting. Do you have that in the public hearing?
Hope I have on the second evening for adoption. Keep in mind that we do consider the capital on the agency requests, as we visit with a lot of agencies, we hope this even happens.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for providing the information today, it's warmed up, tough decisions we gotta make in the future, so, next time, as a chairman, commissioners.
So, we should be made, like, we should make it, okay?
Okay.
Bye, bro.
Thank you.